And remain standing for prayer by Councilor Wright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, you said we're two, and we're gathered in your name that you're amongst us, and we thank you. Thank you for this day that we've not ever seen before, nor will we ever see again. Guide us, protect us, correct us, direct us in all your ways, and that this evening that we will make the decisions that will benefit our community, the residents, and each and every one of us. And let us, guide us with, as only you can guide us, Heavenly Father, so that we will do the right thing. Blessed the least, the last, the lost, the hopeless, the helpless, the hungry, the homeless, the marginalized disenfranchised, the underserved, underrepresented, those not represented at all, and the voiceless, dear Lord. Let us be the voices for them, and let there be peace in this community and this country, and that we forget about the party lines, and let's put human back in humanity. In the mighty name of Jesus, by the power of the Holy Spirit, amen, amen, and amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Wright.
You're welcome.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are here.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting is held on March the 3rd, 2025, as well as a memorandum of our executive session held on the 27th.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
If there are no amendments or additions, I move we approve as written and presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to accept the minutes as received. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Yes, both of them. Yes, both of them, mhm. Presentations, petitions, memorials. At this time, Mr. Jack Bales would like to speak to us about the downtown explosion, 1968.
President Parker, council members. I'm Jack Bales, and I want to thank you for granting me this, just a few minutes of your valuable time this evening. I'd like to address the placement of the 1968 Downtown Explosion Memorial that presently sits at Fifth and Main Street. This memorial has over forty names of the sweet souls that were lost on April 6, 1968. And I don't come standing before you with a demand, and what I'm about to request is not a whim. I'm asking that you take in consideration moving the memorial to its rightful place. Now that the Elder Beerman Building's been demolished, and before the Sixth Main Project starts construction, I'm requesting that the memorial be moved to the southeast corner of Sixth and Main, where the Marnin Arms Building once stood. I'm not sure why the memorial was ever placed at its present location, but to me, it's not the proper resting place. Location where the memorial stands now is almost unnoticedable, and if you're younger than sixty-five, you have no idea what it stands for or the names represented on it. I'm wanting to present to this council this heartfelt request because many of the names on that memorial or their family members were personal friends of mine. And one of the names listed, Gregory Oler, I've carried his memory and all the childhood memories we made together in my heart for the last fifty-six years. On Saturday, April 6, 1968, at approximately 1:45 PM, Greg and I walked into Marnin Arms. We walked in to pick up an order we had placed previously about two weeks before this. We're standing shoulder to shoulder, not yet waited on, when the first blast went off. We were pelted with plate glass window debris from the walls, and in a split second, the second blast went off right underneath our feet. That was the last time I saw Greg alive. When I regained consciousness, I was on top of a tall pile of bricks where only a few minutes before that, the two-story building, Marnin Arms, stood. There were multiple fires burning all around me. I couldn't breathe due to the intense brick dust. There was a large wooden beam laying across my back, and I pushed out from under that beam with my legs and made my way down off that mountain of rubble down to the Sixth Street side. Two workers from Wayne Dairy helped me to the alley and sat me down. One of the men said, "You have an arrow in your back," and he says, "I'm gonna pull it out." He says, "This may hurt a little bit," and to this day, I remember just exactly how much it hurt. The two men helped me down the alley to Seventh Street, and as we walked down the alley, the ammunition was going off, ricocheting from building to building. It sounded like a war zone. The two gentlemen flagged down an old station wagon, put me in it, and the gentleman driving it took me to Reed Hospital. He helped me into the waiting room, and there, there were many people waiting to be attended for their injuries and wounds. It was complete chaos. There was so much confusion. The doctor finally came out and looked at me and said that I wasn't hurt that bad. He said, "There are many more hurt worse than you, and there are many more on its way, on their way." He said, "Go home, lay in bed a couple of weeks, and you'll be fine." Several days later, I returned to Reed. I was treated for various broken bones, ruptured eardrums, both, severe burns, and two broken pearly berries in my back. I spent the next several months in traction before I was released from Reed Hospital. Now, almost fifty-seven years later, for the most part, the physical wounds have healed, but the nightmares still come. The nightmares of being surrounded with fire, trapped in a building, only come occasionally now. I've told you just a very, very brief overview of that fateful day and the days and years to follow, but it gives us, council, an indication why I'm making this heartfelt request to move and rededicate the April 6, 1968 memorial. Again, I want to thank you for your time. I really appreciate it, and it's been a pleasure to address you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, Mr. Bales and I have been in touch with each other, and I did go look at the memorial, and it's almost hidden. And I don't know whether we would set up a committee to look at this or whatever, but I'd be glad to serve on that committee. There's not a lot of people on here old enough to remember, but no one that was alive at that time does not know where they were at and what they were doing at that moment. I was personally standing outside of the airport. We had a club there, a group of us, with rockets blasting, building and blasting rockets off, and I'll never forget seeing the mushroom cloud and actually feeling the explosion six miles away.
Yep.
Yep.
You have a comment?
Me?
Mhm.
I remember being two, and I remember the china cupboard in our, I was sitting on the floor, and the china cupboard just started shaking really bad, and my mom grabbed me and she went and took me to go pick up my sister at a, at a home. But I remember that. I was only two, but I remember what the floor felt like, and I remember the, the wall shaking.
Okay.
Yep.
Any additional comments? What I'd like to do is I'd like to discuss this with the mayor, see what his input would be, and then we can then go ahead and get a committee going.
That would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Bales.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
We have no communications from the mayor at this time. The Board of Public Works and Safety, we have one of February the 27th. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding this? Hearing none, we have a report from Chief Kinder for the Fire Department.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Before I start the annual report with the Richmond Fire Department, I'd like to take a second to pay homage to some of our history high points, starting with Edgar Miller, chief from 1907 until his death in 1931. He moved the department from horse to the motorized department. He started firefighter training programs and the fire prevention and the platoon shifts that was instated and developed into what we currently work. William Berry, chief from 1969 to 1975, firehouse number one, current location opened in 1969. Firehouse two and three, current locations were built in seventy-three and seventy-five, and Fire Station Five's current location was opened in 1971. James Dicko, chief from 1990 to 1986. The turnout gear, the fire eater, was lost. The SCBA's were mandated that we start wearing facepieces and tanks in that time period. I couldn't imagine a time not wearing it. The modern turnout clothing went from the boots and long coat to turnout gear that we currently wear today. Mike Allen, chief from 1996 to 2005. EMS, Emergency Medical Service Required Certification was implemented into the Richmond Fire Department, and our first squad ambulance was purchased for the fire department. Jerry Purcell, chief from 2014 to 2022. The Richmond Fire Department became a 911 EMS Advanced Life Support Paramedic Response for the City of Richmond, and the Richmond City Department Israel Izzy David Elman Training Center opened. There are many other accomplishments along the way in history, but I don't have time to share all those. Starting 100 years ago, the blueprint of the modern fire department was being designed and built. Technology has played an important role in today's fire and EMS service. Having the ability to generate reports and steam, stream real-time data has moved this department forward. Now, the data. Richmond Fire Department, 2024, total runs 11,316. Dispatch runs 10,975. EMS runs 8,814. EMS dispatch runs 8,039. Transported 7,221. Non-EMS transports 1,593, and dispatched non-EMS calls of 3,754 calls. One of the big concerns that's been plaguing the fire department for several years now is hiring retention, and it's been challenging. We currently set eleven employees down from our contract of eighty-five. We hired thirteen new employees in 2024. We have thirty-five members right now that have less than four years on the department, and that will increase as we hire more personnel. In the last five years, we have had forty-two members leave the department. Nineteen have retired, twenty-three have left the department. The consistent mandatory order in overtime and level of pay is a root cause employee burnout and the main reason members are leaving the department per exit interviews. We are currently spending over $100,000 a month in overtime. We have seven employees in the hiring process. We can, right now, have got the state approval to run our own physical agility test, and that is in the process, hopefully in, in May. The fire prevention, over 4,000 kids have been through the prevention last year. An update of software on the fire code compliance at eighty-eight percent. On capital improvements, the safe haven baby box was placed in service. Station Five model was, was completed. Station Two remodel is in process. The Station One Sixth Street ramp was completed, and the training facility improvements are ongoing. Equipment, we had in place a 100-foot stick pierce ladder truck and a brand-new ambulance put in place. EMS, total dispatch emergency call was 8,039. Billable transports was 7,022. Average collection was $411.10. The 2024 billing rates are 500 for a BLS call, a $600 for ALS I, a 700 for ALS II, a $300 charge for BLS transfer, and a $600 for an ALS transfer, and mileage is at $12 per mile. The billing rates were set in 2011. They have not been increased to this date, and they are way past due. On the training division, training division has been very busy this year. Every employee, all every new employee had to do hazmat awareness, hazmat operations. They had to do their firefighter I, firefighter II, driver operator, and evac and EMT. We have also had instructor I, fire officer strategy and tactics, firefighter I, firefighter II, and classes for, officer classes. There are seven current members in paramedic school at this time, and our hazmat tech class is set for July of this year, and our rope rescue class is set for the 2025 June of this year. Other notable things that happened in 2024, we inventoried the fire department, so we have a running live inventory, so at all times, we know exactly where everything's at and what we have. The other notable thing that happened in 24, due to budgetary constraints, Richmond Fire Department decided not to fund the MIH program any further. It was decided the best course of action for the citizens of Richmond was to continue the transition in support of incoming Stride Center. I'm happy to announce that Stride Center is fully open. The Stride Center also supports an MIH program within that center. In closing, I'd like to thank the members of Richmond Common Council for letting me present the Richmond Fire Department 24 Annual Budget. If there's any questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, what is our collection rate right now? I know we originally based it on forty percent.
It's, it's $411, and that's what, that's where our collection rate was average.
No, I mean our average collection rate as far as actually collecting from somebody. I know we based it on forty percent collect.
It was, our collection rate were averaged was $411 per, yeah. And it's, you know, it hasn't been changed since 2011, so we're due.
Yeah. I, sir, may I?
Sure.
Just running some quick numbers, six additional personnel would cost under a half a million dollars, and it was, that's as opposed to the overtime being 700,000 for that. So definitely, that has to be, I think, a consideration we need to all look at, because you're right, the burnout is a big problem.
And we're, we're in the planning stage of that development right now with the local 1408, ourselves, and the mayor, and what the best process to do. We've called twenty-nine other departments in the state, kind of looking at what they're doing, because this is with the EMS and the things, because the truth is, the state's way under-valued as far as their paramedicine. Our next-door neighbor has 20,000 medics that operate. We have 1,350 that make five runs a year. And with the fire departments taking over more EMS runs and more and more EMS, that's what the, the paramedicine has become a hot, the supply and demand. Demand is high for paramedicine, but the supply is low. And I have talked to Dr. Barrett several times in trying to get the state to help, help us across the state. This is not a Richmond problem. This is a Muncie problem. This is an Anderson problem. This is a lot of a problem. Trying to get people to train and do the job. And you understand that. You, you was there too. You know exactly what I'm talking about.
Any additional questions? I have one. The billing rates, are, are those what Medicare pays? Is that what we set at one?
Well, they're, they're, they were set for Medicare in 2011, but we're actually losing the money because Medicare has changed over the last several years, and we're actually losing money on every run now.
So Medicare would pay more than that?
Yes.
Why haven't, we changed it then?
Because we just, we're just, that's what we're working on right now, because we're in the midst of billing companies, and it's just happened the last couple of years with the new law that just went through with Dr. Barrett, EMS law. We can charge more on mileage, and there's other things we can charge for. And the ALS II's, we're losing about $45 a run on an ALS II run right now.
I don't know what that is.
That's, ALS I is where a paramedic has to do cardiac monitoring and that stuff. ALS II is, you're in trouble. That's, you know, CPR's in progress, where they have to give you drugs and all that stuff. There's just a difference in how it's billed.
Okay. If someone falls in their house at three in the morning, we go pick them up, right?
Yes.
And we charge them nothing?
No.
Why?
Well, we've talked about billing company about that. It's, you're, you'll spend more trying to get, to get the legal fees and that stuff to try to go get it than it is worth. Now, we have other opportunities. What we, what we do is, we try to get them help. If it's a, becomes a problem, we try to reach out to Reed and the centers and other places that can help them and come in and talk to them and try to get them help in that aspect of it. Because I understand people don't leave their homes. We, we understand that. But there comes a point in time where there has to be intervention, and we have to step in and.
I understand, I understand that too, and I understand all the situations. I mean, some people can't afford it, but sometimes it's repeated. There has to be some way to take care of that.
And we do. It just takes a little time. It does. It just, it just takes a little time and a little compassion sometimes, because we understand, you know, people don't leave their homes. We understand that. And it's hard, so, you know, there is a limit that we do, and like I said, after three or four or five times, there's emails being sent to, you know, places that we can try to get them help, intervention, and we do.
I think it's wonderful that the city does that. Don't get me wrong. It's just, I know that it's very expensive.
Well, I mean, I have, I've had chiefs from Muncie and Anderson call and ask about the same question. Do they charge on liposist and pickups? That's kind of a.
They don't charge anything either?
No.
Okay.
It's, how you do it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Chief, are we on pace for $1.2 million in overtime this year?
As of right now, we yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, we're trying to figure out a way to, we're using part-time help to backfill some of that, but they're limited on how many hours they can work. And we're in the planning stage of trying to figure out how to go forward to cut overtime. Because, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a quick process, and we know that. And, and in this planning stage, we have to figure out the best way out of it and what's best for Richmond, the City of Richmond, and the fire department.
Final comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Ordinance is on first reading. Mr. Goss.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we read ordinance 2025 and 2125 by title only.
Second.
We have a motion to read ordinance 2025 and 2125 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Ordinance 2025, an ordinance of the City of Richmond, Indiana designated an area within the city as an economic development target area.
Good evening, council. Good evening. Beth Fields, Director of Strategic Initiatives. President Parker, with your permission, we would like to present all of the information for both 20 and 21, 2025, at the same time, because the same information pertains to both projects.
Please do, yes.
Thank you. As a quick introduction and a reminder, these ordinances relate to the Smith Hill subdivision that is being proposed on the east side of Richmond. As a reminder, this will be a 285 single-family home development. Of that, it will include ninety-nine townhomes at that location. And tonight, we're talking about in ordinance 2025, establishing a Smith Hill Economic Development Target Area. And you have a map of that at your seats for that target area. And then also the initial first reading for bond issuance that is related to the Indiana Finance Authority's Residential Housing Infrastructure Program. With me tonight to present the information for both of these is Jason Simler, Principal at Baker Tilly, our municipal advisors, as well as Lisa Lee, Partner at Ice Miller, our bond counsel. So at this time, I'm going to invite Jason up to share some of the data with you for these two ordinances.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jason Simler, Principal Baker Tilly. In your packet, you should have a presentation for Baker Tilly data, I believe, March 11th. I'd like to go through those numbers with you.
We do.
If you turn to page two, as Beth mentioned, they're looking at about 285 housing development. On page two, looks at that development, how we're anticipating to be built out over a ten-year period. You can see there on the right side, there are a number of different types of developments, from custom homes, sunrides homes, to country yard villas, and then also approximately ninety-nine townhomes. Based upon information received by the developer, we're anticipating the first seventeen of those homes will be built in 2027, start paying taxes in 2029. We're estimating that tax increment from that development to be about $62,000 a year. Then, as that development continues, as projected, you can see by 2038, we're estimating the tax increment from those houses to be around $760,000 a year. Very similar to what I know I hear just a few weeks ago on the F and C facility. Very similar to that project. What we're looking at is creating a tax increment allocation area, caps, capturing the tax increment from this project, being able to use that to fund the bonds. So if you turn to page three, the bonds that are mentioned, the bond ordinance that you have in front of you. As Beth mentioned, there's a new program that was established a couple of years specifically for projects like this. It's through the Indiana Finance Authority. It's the Residential Infrastructure Housing Funding Program, and it's to fund public infrastructure, just public infrastructure for projects similar to this. It's very similar to the State Revolving Fund Program that I'm sure you're probably familiar with, the water and sewer projects. And I'll talk about this here in a minute. One of the major benefits of a program like this is the subsidized interest rate that allows on the bonds. So the city did apply through that program in December, and it was awarded $4,330,000. I believe there's around twelve communities throughout the state that were awarded the second time around, and the City of Richmond was one of those. And part of the reason it was awarded the, the money this round was because you were ready, the developers were ready. The city was prepared to move quickly on this project and to close, you know, later this summer. If this, both three don't commission, the council decides to move forward. So looking at the funding program, kind of starting at the top, the amount of public infrastructure is about $4,330,000. And that was also the amount that was awarded by the state. We do have interest that will be funded during the time period the houses are being built, and interest is screwing on the bonds. We have a reserve fund. Again, that's amount of money set aside in a separate account that is used to help pay for principal and interest if, for some reason, the tax increment is not sufficient. And then you also have professional fees. So the total project costs about $5,535,000 is what we're estimating at this time. The funding, again, is the $4,330,000 that was awarded to the city. And there's a $1,205,000 of additional funding that's either going to be coming from the developer or from the housing program itself, if there's any additional money left over. They have told us that they could, the City of Richmond could be recipient of additional funds beyond the $4.3 million, or it'll be handled by the redevelopment commission to help fund that gap of around $1,200,000. Again, the bonds, as we'll kind of talk about here in a minute, very similar to the F and C project that we talked about, is going to be payable just from the tax increment that we talked about from this development, and if there's a shortfall, from a taxpayer agreement from the developer. So if you turn to page four, this is an illustration of how we're anticipating the $4.3 million will be paid back. You can see the first couple of years, it's zero payments, again, because that was, those payments are anticipated paid from bond proceeds. Something else I want you to pay close attention to is the interest rate there. You see there in the kind of middle of the page, 3.11%. As I mentioned, one of the favorable benefits of this program is a subsidized interest rate. Right now, it's 3.11%. It changes quarterly. changes quarterly, so April 1, it could change. But if you compare this interest rate to the interest rate that we had received with F, C, and C, which is about 7.5%, you can see how this is a very beneficial program and allows us to stretch that revenue that you're receiving even further. So you can see on the far right side, the payment stream starts, or the annual payments are about $67,000 and then increases to about $446,000. And the reason why is if you turn to page five, we structured those annual payments based upon the revenue stream that we talked about on page two. So on page five, you look at the tax increment, again, that we're projecting based upon information provided by the developer. We've set aside $10,000 a year to help pay for administrative fees, which leaves a net tax increment there. Again, we do anticipate that the tax increment won't be sufficient to cover the bond payments for the first three or four years as the development is being developed, assessed, and paying taxes. Again, that's being set aside in that reserve account that I mentioned on the second page. And then you can see the debt service there of about, again, $67,000 the first year, increasing to $446,000. And you can see on the second column from the right, starting in 2031, we are anticipating that there'll be more tax increment than enough to cover the bond payments. And that will continue for the life of the bonds. But again, if for some reason our tax increment doesn't come to fruition as anticipated, the taxpayer would cover that difference. There's no additional property taxes being pledged from any other city TIF areas or any other revenue from the city. It's just the project tax increment from this development. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from counsel for Jason?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell?
Is this a 25-year?
20 years.
20-year.
Yeah, that's one thing, two things. One, with the IFA program, they limit us to 20 years. And also, this will be a residential TIF area. And per this current statute, residential TIF areas are limited to 20 years.
Additional questions? This is what, 2%?
Right now, it's 3.11%. The rate's anticipated to change April 1, so it may have a slight change.
Which way?
My fear may go up a little bit, but we'll have to see.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's still better than the 7.5% that we received on the last deal, so.
Certainly, yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Any additional questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Lisa Lee with Ice Miller, serving as Bond Counsel.
Hello there.
I know that in your memo, Beth kind of laid out the steps. We're here tonight for introduction of the two ordinances. Tomorrow, we'll be in front of the Redevelopment Commission to have the public hearing on the creation of the single, the final step in the creation of the single-family housing TIF area, and then also for them to adopt the, or consider the TIF pledge resolution. And then on April 7, the Economic Development Commission, prior to your council meeting, will be holding their public hearing and making a recommendation, either thumbs up or down, for the council on this project. And then we will come to you on April 7, asking that you adopt the two ordinances. Ordinance number 20-2025, of all the things that Jason has mentioned, and I think Beth also mentioned, this is very much like a lot of the different economic development bond issues that you have done in the past, Blue Buffalo, then F and C, and now this. The one difference here, there's two differences. One is that this is a single-family housing TIF area as opposed to your traditional commercial type of TIF area. And the second piece relates to this ordinance number 20-2025. This is to begin the process of creating an economic development target area. And you haven't heard that in the context of bond issues. But here, the purpose is to allow you to capture the increases in assessed value for townhomes. Townhomes are a housing product that kind of falls between your more typical multifamily apartment type housing and your single-family rooftop housing, both of which the statutes allow us to capture increases or TIF on those types of products. The townhomes, it all became down to what the assessor, how the assessor assessed it. If it was four stories, they said it was commercial, so we could capture it. If it was less than four stories, it wasn't commercial, but it didn't fit the single-family housing. So the legislature gave us this opportunity to just go through this process, create an economic development target area, and then we can capture TIF on townhomes. So my understanding is that a portion of this development may have townhomes as a part of it. So in order to keep that flexibility to allow that to occur, if that's what the city wants and the developer, we're taking this step just to put this in place. The boundary is exactly the same boundary as the project. So we're not trying to create anything anywhere else in the city. It's all related to the boundary of this project. So that, in a nutshell, is this very short ordinance, that's what it's for, is to allow us to capture TIF on townhomes. With that, I'll move quickly to ordinance number 21-2025. This is your typical EDC bond ordinance. Section 5 has the terms, the maximum terms that we always look to provide. You'll see a maximum issuance amount of $9 million. As Jason pointed out, IFA has currently awarded us $4.33 million on this. So there is about 1.2 million that will need to come from other funds unless IFA is able to provide us additional funds based on some projects that may not be ready to move forward. That did happen in the first tranche, and one of our clients did receive maybe an additional 3 to 4 million from a project that just wasn't ready to go at that time. So we're hoping that with having the higher amount already approved all the way through, that if IFA does have additional funds, they will call us and say, is your client, is this client ready to move forward? Are there any additional approvals that will be required with these additional funds? And the answer would be no. We were through all of our approvals. We're ready to go. We can accept the additional funds. So that hopefully, there will not be a funding gap that has to be funded in other ways. I know Beth has that pretty well taken care of, to the extent we need to, but we're hoping for additional funds. So you also see in there a maximum interest rate of 10%, which seems crazy high. But if we did have to go out to the market, these types of TIF funds, you're looking at 7.5% to 8.5% depending on the purchaser. So this is why those parameters are higher than what we're looking at. The 3.11 is our current percentage. As Jason mentioned, it might go up a little bit on April 1, and we're looking to close by the end of April. So we may see a little bit of an interest rate spike from that situation. This is payable from Project TIF only in a taxpayer agreement. No other city funds are pledged to pay the debt service. So we're looking for this to be self-sufficient. And with that, I would answer any questions on either ordinance that you might have.
Questions from counsel? Very none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from counsel before I assign this? Ordinance 20 and 21, 2025 will be assigned to Finance Committee. Ordinance is on second reading.
Amendment ordinance number 13, 2025, a general ordinance amending Chapter 120 of the City of Richmond Code.
Report from Finance Committee.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Why doesn't Safety Committee kick it off first?
Pardon me?
Safety Committee?
I'm sorry. I thought the Finance Committee as well as the Safety Committee looked at it.
We did too.
Okay. Doug?
Public Safety Committee has met and recommend approval.
There you go.
Try to be courteous.
Sweet and short.
The only amendment was for the $20, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Pardon me?
May I speak?
Certainly.
My turn now. So Finance Committee heard this tonight with the increase from $10 to $20, and then the increase in the 15 days delinquent and additional $10. I did have a question for the clerk. Underneath it states if the renewal is delinquent 30 days or more, it'll be removed from the database and a new application is necessary. In that case, maybe additional paperwork, but is there any, do the delinquent fines stay, or does that go down to the initial $20?
It just goes down to the $20? It'd just be a whole new process?
Got you. Finance Committee also recommends approval.
Okay. Any comments or questions from counsel? Amended ordinance 13, 2025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? What is counsel's pleasure?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Okay. Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jerry Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Niner in favor?
Thank you.
Ordinance 16, a special ordinance amending prior special designation ordinance, excuse me, number 41, 2023, to update requirements previously adopted with the designation of DORA number one, known as the Depot DORA.
Mr. Goss?
The Public Safety Committee met with Chief Kyle Weatherly and discussed this, and we do recommend approval.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from counsel?
Moved in gross.
Second.
Ordinance 16 is on second hearing and public hearing, and we'd like to speak, anybody would like to speak in opposition or in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. Now we'll take.
Move for engrossment.
I was going to speak.
We have a motion and second?
Second.
You said, you said for speaking in favor or opposition. Once again, in the past, I have spoke against this due to conscience. I am on volunteer staff for Crossroad Christian Recovery Center for Women, and I'm also on the Drug Free Wayne County Partnership Board of Directors, and due to conscience, I will be voting against this ordinance.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I also, I would like to make a comment too, that after speaking with some constituents and talking about extending the DORA, that if it were possible for those taking advantage, in this case, the Depot District, if there's any, any additional, whether it's a QR code with any kind of information for those that need help with any kind of counseling that they're seeking or anything like that as far as consuming alcohol. Thank you.
Any additional comments, Mr. President? Mr. Purcell?
Yes. Is it possible to amend, and this would be for the corporate attorney, to where the cups that are being used for the DORA would have a QR code on it as a requirement that would be able to be used to direct them to help if they need help with addiction?
I would suggest that when we are considering the nature and scope of this particular ordinance, that that would be a proposal that should be addressed within Public Safety Committee, and then that would amend the original DORA ordinance. But I think that probably requires some additional discussion beyond passing it this evening, but certainly something that this council is able to address and have discussions going further.
Thank you. As a separate ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Jerry Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Larry Parker?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion carried. Thank you.
Let's see.
Ordinance 17.
Ordinance 17, a general ordinance amending Chapter 91 of the City of Richmond Code.
Mr. Goss? First off, the clerk would like to have this amended to add to Section A, very last line, add "and" proof of rabies vaccination by a licensed veterinarian. Do I have that right, Karen?
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion that we amend the ordinance.
Second.
And a motion and second to amend ordinance 17, 2025 to include the approval of a licensed veterinarian for rabies vaccination. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now amended. And the Public Safety recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Final comments or questions from counsel? Ordinance 17 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Final comments?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Jerry Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion carried. There is no any unfinished business? Call for adjournment.
Move for adjournment.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whitewater Community Television family of stations.